Evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 7th meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. I ask our zoning administrator Jeremy to call the roll, please.
McGee.
Here.
Hauser.
Here.
Bixson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Gasson.
Here.
King. Lloyd.
Here.
Stone.
Yep, okay, we have a call. Matt, say who you're attending. Okay, thank you. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That means Matt's in traffic somewhere. I just talked to someone who drove in from Ann Arbor and they were not doing well. Thank you, everyone. We'll start with number three, public comment. And I've asked if there's anyone here who has commented on anything, actually, but preferably not something on the agenda later on in the agenda. You have two more. Welcome, David, welcome, Sarah.
I'll just read link.
No problem. Any public comment? Rose, if you're there, any electronic or otherwise?
So, Rose, that...
It's me today evening, Mr. McGee. There's nobody on Zoom.
She's controlling the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Vidya. All right, approval of the minutes is number four. This is consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 7th. I ask if the commissioners have had a chance to review the minutes and are there any changes, additions, deletions? Mr. Mayor, will that be... So moved? Moved by the mayor, do we have support? Support. Supported by Mr. Sage. Any other comment? The roll call, please.
McGee.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Gasson.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Stone.
Thank you very much. Number five, public hearing. We have three public hearings scheduled for tonight. For the public's benefit, this is a requirement under the law for these projects that we are considering to guarantee that they have been exposed to public review. It's been published in the paper that this meeting's being held tonight and it's been published that these three items will be considered during the public hearing. Just for the record, to let everyone know why we're doing this. The first one, 5A, public hearing, special exception for parking in lieu of, for the Eastman, 366 South Main Street, Suite B. Nick, that's yours.
I'm gonna take that one. Thank you, commissioners, good to see everybody. We're trying to keep things moving here in the process, right? We're trying to be as business friendly as possible. So, in this case, we approached, the building department got approached first to redo a space below Desert Oasis. Jamal, his son are here, the owners of the property today. Make a speakeasy, if you will, in that space. So, we started with Randy and the fire chief going out there inspecting the space, make sure they were eligible. Next step was for them to come and meet with me and Jeremy to go over the parking calculation to see where they would be if, based on what was in the property before. So, before, we had it as an office building, so they get, remember, in the way the parking management scheme is designed, you get credit for the spaces for that use back in 2015. So, we locked that in. If you upgrade your property to something that needs more parking than the previous tenant, or previous use, really, then you would have to pay in lieu. So, we figured out that to be six spaces. Normally, we would come and ask to schedule a meeting for the next month. They're trying to get this going, so Jeremy's got the system down now, so we figured out to get it in the paper early enough to have a public hearing tonight. So, we didn't do the form while you set the public hearing, we just set it, knowing he was here. So, Jamal, you and my Mr. Chairman, Jamal could come up here, Hamud.
Is you.
He can explain what the process or the space is going to be. And staff is in support of this. The parking structure's right behind it. Parking lot's right behind it in Kitty Corner, so we should be, not an issue. I told you a few months ago, someone came in to talk about paying lieu of way up Main Street. Didn't feel that was appropriate because there was no public parking for them.
Not parkable.
Exactly. So, in this case, it's right there, so we're in support. So, if you may, Jamal.
Good evening, guys. Jamal Hamud from the Desert Oasis Coffee Roasters. We own the 336 building on Main Street there. And we're, we thought the ideal use for this space, Doc, sir, if we want to find something that was vibrant, exciting, something that would bring something more to the community, we had office space down there. And office space is great, but it did bring much traffic, did do a whole lot to make it an exciting building. We think the fit and finish of what we've done at the Desert Oasis on the main level, if we take that same kind of level of service to a speakeasy type bar that we're gonna put downstairs, I think we could have a nice, vibrant, exciting building. So, that's, that's why we did that. We approached, planning, to ask them how many spaces we would need, whether we would fit into the parking. I think, I think it was six, six spaces that we do. So, if we do, if we could pay in lieu of that, that would certainly help us move the project forward.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in this case, if you remember when the city council set the parameters, it was anything under 10 spaces would have to be paid at C of O. Anything over 10, you could go to city council, wouldn't have to come here. You could go to the council and they could make a payment plan, but in this case, they would be, owe the city $6,000 in the parking fine.
Right now.
At C of O.
So, is this a new business for you and your property or a tenant coming in?
It is both, actually. We partnered up with somebody who is going to, we're gonna be 50% owners with the partner.
Very good. Questions for the applicant? Okay, no questions? Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing and we'll call it 7:08. And I've asked if anyone in the audience would like to come forward and speak on this matter. This is the proposed speakeasy above Desert Oasis on Main Street.
Below.
Below, sorry. And Vidya, anyone waiting to speak to us electronically?
No, Mr. McGee, there is no one online.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'm gonna close it at 7:09. Considered the public hearing held. Back to the commissioners. Discussion, action, what do you propose? Mr. Stone, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Matt, we're on 5A, as a matter of fact. Anyone wanna make a motion?
So moved.
Mayor's move to approve the pay in lieu that's proposed by the administration? Do we have support? For who's supported?
Mr. Lord.
Ah, Mr. Lord. Okay. Any other discussion on that motion? The roll call, please.
McGee.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Gasson.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good luck to you. Timeline, when might that open?
Sir?
When might that business, the new business, open?
We're really pushing hard to try to get it by the beginning of October, mid-October, if possible.
Okay, for fall, for the holiday season.
We want to be open sufficiently before Lanyoff to train our staff and then be able to hit, hit the road running when Lanyoff hits.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
5B, public hearing for the granary, 303 East University, special project and site plan review approval. Vidya, is this someone ears?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The request before you tonight is from Dominic Mosheri to construct a multiple-family residential development with 30 units within three buildings on a 1.994 acre site that is located on the southeast corner of East University and Water Street and is commonly known as the elevator site building. The site is split zone, but north is to your left. So, this is the split zone line that you see going across the site. The northeast portion is Zoned B1 while the southwest portion is Zoned I1. Both of these districts do not permit residential uses, so the applicant is seeking special projects approval in order to move this project forward. The zoning ordinance does allow an applicant to request special projects approval with a recommendation from the planning commission and final approval by the city council when a project brings forth an innovative concept or a way to develop a site that is otherwise challenging. In addition to special projects approval, the applicant is also seeking to extend the special projects boundary line to cover the entire parcel. If the planning commission recollects, recently, a zoning text amendment was adopted by the city council, which said that any parcel that is located in the special projects boundary line, as shown in the future land use plan map, can be considered, and so can any parcel that is immediately abating it and that is zoned non-residential or multiple-family residential. In this case, it's an unusual situation where the site is split zoned and part of it is special projects and part of it is not. So, as a part of the request for special projects approval, the applicant is also seeking to extend the special projects boundary line from here to pick up the whole of the parcel to make the project feasible. In the master plan adopted by the city in April 2022, the site is designated as mixed use, which is further refined into mixed use and mixed use 1 districts, and this site is located in the mixed use 1 district. With regard to the use, the plan proposes three buildings total. You can see it, one facing Water Street, two facing East University, and the townhouse building that is located on the interior of the site. The 19 units within buildings 1 and 2 are envisioned as live-work spaces, with six units in building 2 and one unit in building 3 also being handicap accessible. With regard to setbacks, the I1 portion of the building, required setback is 25 feet, proposed setback is 15 feet. For the B1 portion, the required setback is 15 feet, proposed setback is 10 feet. So, as part of special projects approval, the applicant is seeking a deviation from these two setback standards. With regard to vehicle circulation, the site is going to be accessed by two access drives, one off East University, which is a two-way access drive, and one off Water Street. We had some concerns about the proximity of the Water Street access drive to the intersection with East University, so the applicant has worked with the city engineer in order to design an island in middle, making the site a right turn in and right turn out only, which would address the concerns, and this is a design that has been approved by the city's engineer. As to traffic, the applicant did submit a detailed traffic study. The applicant had appeared before you on July 6th, which was just last month, and at the time, the traffic study was discussed in detail. And per the applicant, all of the intersections are working at acceptable levels of service except for the northbound traffic at the intersection of Water and East University, which currently functions at a level of service E and will continue to function at a level of service E. The reason the applicant is not able to present a full-blown traffic study is because there is a lot of construction going on in many streets in and around Rochester, as a result of which all of the traffic goes through detours and gets funneled in through the city, so any traffic data that you get at this time will be skewed and not be an accurate reflection. In response to the planning commission's question, the applicant had noted that the study was done in 2022 when the retail business on the site, that is, the elevator store, was still open and functioning. So, the data does reflect a retail use on the site before this. In spite of this, we did have concerns about how traffic will get impacted. After the meeting, the applicant has worked with city administration, and in my last conversation, Nick had indicated that the applicant is going to work with the city to install a four-way stop sign at the intersection in order to make sure that traffic moves at a better level of service and doesn't get any worse than it currently is. And in fact, a four-way stop sign might actually improve the amount of stop time required for northbound vehicles on Water Street. Circulation for fire trucks and for trash trucks requires them to go into the site, go all the way to the end, and then back up. And this circulation pattern was deemed as acceptable by the fire chief at the last meeting. With regard to public sidewalks, there is an existing public sidewalk along the site's university frontage. A new sidewalk is proposed along the site's Water Street frontage. The site plan labels it as an existing walk, which is incorrect because right now, the site is just an expanse of asphalt, and asphalt is not considered as a sidewalk material. So, this sidewalk is technically a new five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk placed properly in the right-of-way to meet the city's requirements. In addition, there are sidewalk connectors shown to individual units, and these sidewalk connectors are three feet wide. And since they're located on private property, they are not required to be five feet wide as required under ADA requirements. In addition to this, the applicant is also proposing a sidewalk connector on this, on the south side of the site, which will provide a connection to the Pink Creek Trail. If you cross the parking lot of the Mill Restaurant, there is a sidewalk connection on this end, and there is a system of connecting the site all the way to the Pink Creek Trail based upon what they have proposed. For off-street parking, based upon 15 two-bedroom and 15 one-bedroom units, a total, I'm sorry, 15 two-bedroom and 15 three-bedroom units, a total of 75 parking spaces are required for the site. 60 of these spaces are located within individual garages for each of these units, and 60 spaces are proposed to be located in the individual drive base. There are only two public parking spaces, which are right next to the elevator building. One of them is handicap accessible and does meet ADA standards. The applicant has noted the interior width of the garage as 19 feet and has verified that width is adequate, in fact, for two-car parking inside each of these buildings. With regard to architecture, I will go over to the architectural details, examples on one of these sheets. This is a very big packet, so pardon me. Okay, so this is the applicant's proposed architectural design of the live-work units and what the building is going to look at. There are lots of renderings and in addition to it, detailed elevations of all of the buildings. The buildings are to be constructed of brick, limestone, battenciding, metal trim, and provided with an asphalt shingled roof. And the applicant has basically described the design style of the building as train depot style with arched entrances, the doors, and way the windows are, some of the curb tops of the windows. The design is inspired and designed to look like that. In addition to it, the length of the building is broken up by roof jogs, and if I could go to an architectural elevation on sheet 161, the planning commission can actually see the building facade. I'm sorry, this is the elevation of the, I should go to... So, these are some of the elevations of the actual buildings. The drawings are very detailed and the packet is 288 pages long, so it's taking a minute to load up and show you what it looks like. So, this is the flow plan of the units and the elevation details. Each of these buildings is designed with a tower feature still on the flow plans. If I can just, okay. Right to right and scroll to an elevation where you can actually see the full building with all of the building materials. And the long wall expanse of the exterior walls is broken up by the central tower features that the applicant is proposing. Lot of brick on the buildings, arches to windows, soldier course, row of bricks, decorative cornices, metal railings for the balconies. So, significant amount of detail is added to make the facade attractive. Decorative lighting, in keeping with the architectural style, also enhances the structures. With regard to landscaping, the applicant has submitted a landscape plan for the site and also a colored rendering of what the landscaping is going to look like. As you can see, there are lots of street trees proposed to give a good color to the site. The plantings propose a mix of deciduous ornamental and evergreen trees, variety of shrubs and perennials to add to the green space and also enhance the front yards. The interior area between the garages is split up by these small islands that are to be planted with shrubs in order to provide separation between the various drive bases. Now, our zoning ordinance does have a specific section with some landscaping requirements. It's not exhaustive, but there are landscaping requirements, and the landscape plan needs to include calculations that actually demonstrate compliance with that particular standard. Under the comment we had to make is the landscape plan notes that all the areas shown as lawn shall be sordid or seeded. Our recommendation is that the applicant add sod rather than seed, because if there is a dry season, seed generally does not catch on well, and even hydroseed does not, and it ends up being very difficult to maintain with a lot of weeds coming in. So, installing sod right at the beginning would ensure that the site has a finished and attractive appearance from the beginning itself. Several of the plantings that you see over here, some of these plantings, they are actually located on Mills' property, the Abakin property to the south, and the applicant has submitted copy of a landscape easement agreement with a sketch of how much of the landscaping is located on the neighbors' property. That agreement is subject to review and approval by the city's attorney. We do have a tree removal ordinance, which requires the preservation of 80% of the trees on the site that have a diameter of seven inches or larger, or evergreens that are over 20 feet tall. Now, the tree surveys submitted has got a total of 34 trees shown, but the condition of the trees and their status, whether they're going to be preserved or removed, has not been identified. Now, some of these trees are considered nuisance species, such as box elders and cottonwoods, but there are also a lot of regulated trees on the site, such as Norway maples and tree of heaven, and those are considered as regulated trees, which if removed, need to be replaced. Now, tree replacement calculations are specifically provided for in our code of ordinances, and replacement trees are required above and beyond required landscaping. So, if all of the replacement trees cannot be fit onto the site, the applicant does have the option of paying into the city's tree fund. We are not sure at this time if any of the existing trees on the site qualify as landmark trees as defined by the city's ordinance, so we defer to the city's forester, Nick Banda, to actually inspect the trees and make a determination if any of them qualify as landmark trees. And if they do, landmark trees require city council's final approval for removing. Now, lighting forms a very important aspect of the site's design. I'll go back to the main site plan, so the planning commission has context. So, lighting forms an important plan. The applicant has submitted a detailed photometric plan that shows light levels on the whole site, and the site is compliant with the ordinance's requirements. There are decorative wall light fixtures proposed that are also existing street lights. So, between the existing street lights and ornamental fixtures that are proposed, the site should be well illuminated. Trash removal, like I previously mentioned, requires trash trucks to go between the buildings to pick up curbside trash and then just back up. We were not keen on that particular circulation pattern, but the applicant has clarified that there is really no room to provide a turnaround, and this sort of setup is currently existing in other sites within the city and is functional. With regard to amenities, the amenities proposed are a little seating area over here with two benches. The applicant's intent is that it's a place for people to rest if they want to continue walking along and connect to the Pink Creek Trail. For signage, the applicant is proposing the words "The Granary" on the arch, which is like a train depot entrance for each of the buildings. There is a lot of wall signage shown. The wall signage is subject to review and approval by the city's administration for the total size that it occupies. With regard to the design, they appear to be individual metal letters and are attractive and in keeping with the architectural design proposed. A couple of minor other issues that came up is there is a common mailbox over here set on two pedestals. We had recommended that the applicant strike this area as a no-parking zone so that tenants don't drive into the site, park here to retrieve their mail, and block incoming traffic into the site, causing a backup on East University. So, this area needs to be striped off as a no-parking zone so that they can park at their homes and then walk to the mailbox and retrieve their mail. The plan also does not show ground-mounted mechanical equipment, which was previously mentioned, so the ground-mounted mechanical equipment needs to be shown along with the landscape screening around it. Now, one of the important considerations is special projects. For a project to be designated as a special project, it needs to set itself apart from something that is just a general site plan. The applicant is presenting this project as a housing type that is much in need in the community as a live-work space. And per the applicant, the public benefit secured will be creating new jobs during the construction period, supporting the local economy by having 30 new units and therefore tenants who will go out and shop and eat in downtown, and also cleaning up a blighted property through an adaptive reuse of the elevator building. Which brings us to the important historical feature on the site, the elevator building itself. Now, this building is currently on the National Register of Historic Places. However, it is our understanding that over a period of time, the building has fallen into disrepair. If you look at satellite images, sections of the roof appear to have even caved in and does not appear structurally stable. Per the applicant's narrative, the iconic portion of the building, which you see over here, the front elevation, some portions of the elevations are going to be maintained in order to continue painting the look of a granary or a green, green building, but the rest of the building will be changed by providing the new roof, windows, a glass conservatory, and new trim, and it'll be changed into a community clubhouse for the residents and also for the general public. However, all of these changes means the structure will no longer be placed on the National Register of Historic Places. It will no longer be considered as a historic structure. It will be a restored historic structure that maintains some of its original character. This is an adaptive reuse, but not a historic preservation or rehabilitation. Because it's not a historic preservation or rehabilitation, the applicant has noted that there is really no need for an historic architect at this time. They do intend to collaborate with the Historical Society to meet the city's vision and to preserve the elevator's history. In addition to this, since it's a special project, the applicant is required to go through a sustainability worksheet. If the planning commission recollects, the city of Rochester put together a very novel concept called a sustainability evaluation, which includes a total of six criteria for a total of 20 indicators, and applicants have to self-score and then re-review it to make sure how many points are earned. For a project to be considered as sustainable and ready to move to the next step, it needs to score from 15 to 20 points. If it scores anywhere from eight to 14, it is considered as a need of mitigation. If it scores less than eight, the project is considered as non-sustainable and needs to go back to the drawing board. At this point of time, based upon our evaluation of the project, this sustainability worksheet was updated in May 2021, based upon whether the project is a residential, mixed use, or a non-residential project, whether it impacts the DDA or does not impact the DDA. This project is squarely a residential project that is located in an area that impacts the downtown. So, the scoring has been done accordingly, where some categories are not relevant, while other categories, applicant gets an opportunity to score 1.5 to 2 points rather than just one. Based upon our scoring, the project has scored a final score of 14.5 out of 20. So, a little explanation is required here. The applicant has scored full points. The applicant has scored full points in all of the indicators that pertain to environmental health, mobility, and physical strength. In terms of public services, they were unable to score all of the points for system capacity, and that was unavoidable because right now, there is not much on the site. So, any development of the site will mean they are going to contribute additionally to the public utilities or the sewer system, so there is no way for them to earn the points for system capacity. So, that's a point that they did not earn, even though there is no possible way for them to earn it. The project did not score many points in housing affordability or business attraction in downtown in the way we have it written in the sustainability worksheet. For instance, whether any public, whether 10% increase in public parking is there, whether any new commercial businesses are being provided. Technically, the applicant did not score any points for that. However, the planning commission should take into account the fact that this building, this site is located right next to the downtown, and it could be argued that the 30 units and the tenants and the residents who are going to live in these units are actually going to support the downtown businesses and thereby contribute to the economy of the downtown, even if the site itself does not include a commercial use component. So, the 14.5 on 20 is a score that is based on absolute application of the sustainability indicators. The planning commission can evaluate it based upon the fact that this site is contributing to the growth of the downtown, just not in the way it is envisioned in the sustainability spreadsheet. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. This is a pretty elaborate and detailed review for a project because this is the first time it's coming before me for all of the details. So, I'm happy to answer any questions and address any concerns you might have.
Questions for the planner? David?
Vidya, very nice report, very nice project as well. The parking you mentioned was a combination of in-garage, two-car spaces, and I didn't quite get where, and I didn't see on the plans where outside the building I made I make an assumption it's directly in front of the garage doors.
Yes, I will pull up the site plan, and I'll pull up the site plan on the screen so I could show it to you.
So I'm, it sounded like they have adequate parking based on the requirements, more than enough.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm gonna question how it functions. If you have a unit with two or three bedrooms and potentially four cars for that unit, two in the garage, and then two directly outside in front of those two cars in the garage. Maybe that's normal. Could you walk me through that being okay from a planner's perspective?
Yes, happy to, Mr. Gessen. So the applicant's proposal is to, yes, I was trying to zoom in so we can see the dimensions written over here. So the applicant's proposal is to have two cars parked within their garages. Sorry, I think I scrolled. Okay, two cars parked within the garages. And then they have an eighteen-foot-wide space driveway for each of these units, and these little islands are intended as a separation. So the two cars to be parked in the driveway are intended to serve as either tenant parking, resident parking, or as visitor parking. Now, my key concern when I reviewed it was what happens if there are cars parked here and cars parked here? So the applicant has actually shown twenty-two foot depth, and they have shown twenty-foot-wide deep over here, and that still leaves an aisle that is twenty-six feet wide. Typically, a two-way circulation aisle required is just twenty-four feet in any parking lot. Twenty-four feet is considered more than ample to provide for turn movements and. So even if we have cars parked back-to-back on all of the driveways, there will still be ample room for vehicles to make the move and also for a fire truck to make its turn into between the buildings and out.
Okay, I thank you for that explanation. And so maybe just a little more detailed in just one unit. How, how do you see, and is it okay from a planner's perspective to have four cars in one unit where two are directly behind the other two? I'm just trying to envision, how does the movement of a car inside the garage happen without a little chaos? And is that okay? That, that might be just fine.
Yes, there, there is a concept in planning called tandem parking, and tandem parking was something the planning commission reviewed when we did the townhouses on Main. Typically, it, it is a little bit of a hassle for the resident, but if the resident has three cars, two cars are parked, and one is in the driveway, and they need to take the car out of the garage, they're first going to have to have someone or reverse this car out, bring this vehicle out, and then put this back in, into the garage or onto the driveway. So, yes, they are going to have to do some maneuvering, but tandem parking in downtown areas is not a unusual concept. It's not the most ideal, but it is often used.
Okay, and that's kind of what I was, I wanted to hear from a planning perspective, that that's okay and common.
Yes.
And you did, thank you. The other thing was loading-unloading, as it's described as a mixed-use development. Is there something indicated as a loading-unloading zone?
So this is a residential development. It's not a mixed-use development, and that is why we have applied residential building parking standards for it. It's considered as live-work, but it's technically residential. Mixed use would involve a commercial component, which they do not have. So this project is strictly being proposed and reviewed as a residential use only, and that's why the elevator building is also re-profited only as a community center building and not as a business. So as such, loading space is not required. The only vehicles that will probably come here are Amazon trucks or FedEx, UPS, or any furniture delivering trucks.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Other questions for the planner?
I have a question about the, the garbage.
Please.
Um, I know it was noted on the, in your write-up, and thank you, it was very detailed, but the parking or the, the garbage, my understanding is that's going to be contained within the garages, and then it would be placed in the back, in the rear, and the garbage trucks would come between buildings one and three?
Yes.
So these are nineteen-foot-wide garages, correct? I think.
Yes.
I, I question how realistic that is to contain two cars plus the, the garbage in there, potentially have two cars parked in eighteen-foot-wide space behind, and then have a place for the, the garbage cans?
I'm trying to, I'm going to pull up one of their floor plans. I believe the garages are nineteen feet wide, but let me just check the depth of the garages. I believe the applicant had, this question came up at the preliminary meeting and discussions, and the applicant had, here, if I could just zoom in. I'm going to zoom in onto one of these floor plans. So. I don't know, the computer, okay. So we have a two-car garage, and it's. Okay, so the distance, the width is nineteen feet, five and a half inches from interior wall to interior wall, and the distance from the garage door till here is, is noted as twenty feet. But they do have this little jog in the wall, which apparently is intended for storage, which is where I'm expecting they will have their trash can space because the distance from this wall till here is twenty-one feet. So it is slightly longer. The standard garage length used to be twenty by twenty. However, in the newer homes, it's much larger, but twenty by twenty is still a standard that is built on. And in this case, the additional one feet gives rooms for storage and possibly placing of their trash can.
Okay. Also, what is the, on the drawings here, there's a parking lot next door?
Yes.
Is that part of this parcel, or is that separate?
I'm sorry, which, which direction are we talking? Let me just go to.
That'd be the south? Yeah.
The south side. That is the parking lot of the Mills, the Mills Restaurant. That does not belong to the applicant, so. I zoomed in a lot, I'm just going to zoom out. So the parking lot over here actually belongs to the Mills.
And there's no access between them?
There's a.
There is no parking lot access between, between the two sites. The applicant only has a shared landscape agreement to enable them to place some landscaping on their property because the property, this is their property line. So this landscaping is all located actually on the neighbor's property, which they are fine with. So this parking belongs to the Mill.
So you cannot drive between these two lots?
Eric?
Just, I, I missed the last meeting, so this may have been discussed, but. And Vidi, you kind of answered it for me a little bit, but you're, we're treating this as a residential project, right? So the, the work-live component of it, I heard was a need that, in the city. It's satisfying a need that we have in the city. But in terms of the use itself, is there, is there anything that the work-live that we're treating differently because of that word? Because I, I just see, you know, a housing, a townhouse unit with an office on the first floor is basically what we have, right? Like, is there signage differences? Are, are they allowed to do something different from a business perspective here? What's the, what's the difference?
So the limitation would be, since it's not a mixed-use and it's a residential development, the planning commission at the preliminary meeting did discuss this to make sure that the applicant cannot convert that office into a regular office. So when we say live-work, the work portion of it will be no different than a home office or a home occupation at the most. It cannot be a conventional office like you have in downtown, like a full-fledged real estate office. They will not be allowed to convert it because if they convert it to a full-fledged office, this technically becomes a mixed-use project, which does not then meet its parking needs. The only way it's meeting its parking needs is by keeping it in a live-work situation. And as I understand, based on what the applicant explained, in the post-pandemic era, even though now a lot of offices do require you to go back in, it is not for five days in a week. Many of them require a hybrid kind of setup. That doesn't necessarily mean people don't need an office at home to be able to work out from. So this gives them the ability to actually have a designated space in their home for working and then have the rest of their living space in a different area. So this particular question about whether it's a residential use or a mixed-use did come up originally when the applicant was discussing it with Nick Banda and myself. And that's how we arrived at what the parking count for the site would be and what the limitations would be to converting any of this into true office or commercial use.
So Eric, we, we asked the question at the last meeting about the, the first floor space. They're not compelled to use it for a business. As a matter of fact, someone could really rent one of these as a three-story home and make bedrooms out of the first floor, whatever they would choose to do.
Right.
Thus, it is truly purely residential.
Right, exactly.
But they could not hang their shingle out, so to speak, and have employees coming in.
Well, what I wanted to make sure we're avoiding is, if you can, if you know the area, I, I think it's maybe Shelley Township, but sort of behind Costco over there, there's that work-live that they did, and it's, I mean, no offense, it's brutal. You know, there's like signs in the windows, there's, you know, there are businesses they put up and.
My guess is that that will have to be policed here.
Yeah.
By the landlord.
Well, that's why I wasn't sure if there's a master deed that covers this in terms of the workplace, but I think my question's been answered. It's, this is really a residential piece, that's it.
Mr. Chairman?
Chris?
Quick question. Looking at drawing, it's the landscape plan, and this goes to the question that Commissioner King had asked about the parking lot to the south. It looks like there's a sidewalk that would connect the two, the parking lot to the new development. And it looks like it's kind of like a, I don't know, a zigzag back and forth. Is that because of a grade change that it, is it going to be ramped? Or is that just how it was designed to, to look like that? In the sense that it couldn't just be one straight sidewalk across?
That's an interesting question. I definitely would defer to the applicant, Mr. Hauser, if that was the design idea. This, this particular area, I see exactly what you're saying. They have two benches over here. I don't know if they meant it as more as an amenity, so you're not sitting directly facing cars.
Sure.
You would have some landscaping between you and the cars, but.
Could our representative of the petitioner respond to that?
Dominic Mosheri, yes, that is accurate, to make up the grade.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very good. So it's a handicap. Equal grade, okay, thank you. Any others? Christian, do you have another one?
And I will follow up with, with Commissioner Lord's comments. At the last meeting, I had those same concerns, and coincidentally, I was right there today after work, and I was thinking, this can't happen here. So I don't think that's the intent, but I'll certainly let the applicant talk about the distinctions between that particular development and what they plan on doing here. I would like to hear that again, if that's okay.
I think one of the things that led maybe you down that path, because I wasn't at the last meeting either, but there are some pictures in here of signage that could be used for businesses, and they're kind of stacked business signs. So that led me to believe that these were actually going to be accessible businesses.
Could we have the petitioner's team come up and maybe you can address that?
Dominic Mosheri again. Yeah, the inspiration for those pictures is just to show that's live-work compatible. In the first report, Vidi, correct me if I'm incorrect, it states that all signage must be in compliance with city sign ordinances. However, if that's a point of contention with the, the commission, I'm happy to come to some sort of agreement to alleviate some of that concern.
Well, I, I just, I'm confused. I would think if they're home offices, you don't really need a sign if you're an attorney and it's just your home office.
I can help. So we have, in, in the city ordinance, it talks about home occupation. You can have a two-square-foot sign in a residential area that says, you can't have employees, but you can have a sign that says, tax, I do taxes. So, so they would just follow the ordinance, and that would limit it to that.
I have a quick question for the, is it two by two foot?
Two square, two square feet.
Two square feet, okay.
And hang out from the building?
I was just gonna say, does it have to be fixed to the building, so it can't extend off the building?
The building or in the window?
Has to be flush on the building, okay.
Or in the windows.
On the windows. And it's just one sign, right?
Correct.
Is that okay, sir? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it clarifies.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
So the planning commission can also, since this is a special project, the planning commission can also place conditions if it addresses a specific concern. As a special project, you're granting deviations, and you're accepting this project as something unique for the community. If you intend for it to meet certain appearance so that it doesn't appear like the site that Commissioner Lord referred to, you could place conditions that signage shall not be placed in windows or any similar reasonable condition that would ensure that these are live-work units without appearing like typical commercial or office buildings.
Mr. Chairperson? If I may.
Jeff? Jeff?
Yeah, just quickly, that, that wasn't, that was a topic at the last meeting, and they did, the petitioner did agree to put language in their rental agreement. And I'll just read the, the part that they had highlighted, which was in the packet, which says, "No sign, advertisement, or other lettering will be placed anywhere in the apartment or the apartment complex, which can be seen from outside the apartment, without the prior approval of the landlord and must be in comply, in accordance with the municipal sign regulations." So they did.
And then following on with Nick, the only thing allowed is a two-by-two. Two, two-square-feet sign, okay. Which is two feet by one feet. Okay.
Is it, again, I'm not trying to, you know, make this too burdensome, but is it possible that there's some type of regulation or restriction on illumination of that sign? That it doesn't light up? And more importantly, is there a way that we can make certain that the signs, if people elect to put a sign on their house, are uniform and consistent? Same font, same style? So I'm sure the architect or the design professionals can come up with, hey, this is representative of what we would allow on the face of the structure, so it, it, you don't have nine different types of signs out there. They're all consistent.
No illumination, by the way.
And no illumination. Again, I'm not trying to make this more cumbersome, but I, I think that.
I could save some problems later on.
Yeah, yes, sir.
There will be creative people living here.
Right.
So I'll ask a follow-up to that. So at the time Mr. Mosheri decides to change his lease agreement, then, so unless we write this in.
Yeah, that's, I think we had talked about that, yes. That, I just, well, that, actually, Mr. Chairperson has to do that, yes. I think Mr. Mosheri wanted to explain on that.
Oh, please. You can bring your, your team up, we'd love, love to hear from you.
Yeah, it sounds good. I just have Giffords Webster, engineer, Dominic Tringali, architect. But I would agree to a concession like that in an agreement. I would, great point, so we're, we're the same agreement, so. Any other questions while I'm over here?
Yeah, my point being, a change in the agreement is wonderful, but you have the right to change your lease agreement at any time.
But I don't have the right to go against the development agreement for the special project.
Right, so we would have to make that part of the special project condition.
Correct, and we agree with that.
Okay.
And that's what we want to do. We want to make sure that's in the. Okay, do you have a presentation you want to?
I do, it's similar to the last one.
Bring us, update us?
Vidi, do I have control here?
Maybe Vidi will.
Vidi?
What was that?
I think we lost.
I'm sorry?
Can you give me control of the computer, please?
Oh, I can, let me just, I think, let me just see how. Jeremy, can you tell me how to give control? Because Jeremy gave me control of the screen. Let me just.
Oh. So if you want, if you want to bring something up, go up into the right-hand corner.
Okay.
Hit that double diagonal arrow. If you added something.
Would you try it again? Would you try it again? I just opened it up.
X her out.
It might be in the.
Are you able to?
Yeah, I got it.
I thought you added.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna hand it over to Dominic Tringali, he's gonna give you a, a brief overview of what Vidi did. Thank you, Vidi, for the very in-depth review. It's very similar to the last meeting, with a couple little changes. I know some of you weren't here, so I think this will give you a really good idea of what's going on.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Welcome back.
Yes, thank you for being here. Vidi did do a great job, so I'm just gonna really highlight a few things. The site plan, as you see, as we've seen before, we have three buildings. This is basically a very low-density residential. One thing that is to be pointed out on the three-story unit is it's all one lease. You cannot rent out that live-work space to anybody else, and that'll be in our lease as well, too. So that whole unit gets rented out to one person. Some of the images that Vidi showed you actually was our project in Birmingham and Eaton Street, which was called Irongate, was a great project, so we had. So we have very familiarity with this type of project. It fills a super-big void that happens in COVID. Some of the big auto owners, people only go back to work, you know, once a day. So they do need a space. Some people may not use it as that either. So we're not specifically gearing this to somebody where you walk up at all. That'll be in the lease, very specific of who can do, what they can do, and so forth. It might be a tax accountant, it could be an engineer, it could be an architect. But very little traffic as far as business traffic. But we're expecting this to be very pedestrian-oriented and using, you know, the whole downtown area through there. So the three buildings, this is a six-unit, this is the 13, those are both the three-story units. This is the elevator that I'll talk a little bit about as well, which is actually the whole concept and idea of this. And then these are the townhouses in the back, which is the 11 units.
So this is the original landscape plan? Because it doesn't show the island.
Correct, yeah, that was the original landscape plan. So this is a new rendering that we just got done, showing kind of the iconic portion of the whole project. And we're gearing it around the granary, which is based on the elevator building itself. I had met with this Historical Society a few times. We're meeting again with Tiffany, actually tomorrow, to discuss a little bit further on this. We're very excited about it. The architecture pulls from there, and everything kind of flows around this whole concept that we've created. So starting with that building, the intent, you know, was done in the early 1880s. And then from there, it was three actual structures. The two structures have already been demolished. We're keeping the iconic portion that you see here. And then this is just an example of another barn that was in Fenton. We will be adding on a greenhouse and bringing it up to code, putting a bathroom in, and actually adding mechanicals that it doesn't have right now. But we do plan on keeping the history and keeping the intent of it. These are some of the elevations that you've seen. This is the main portion that you're gonna see, that we're actually keeping completely intact. And then we want to preserve and keep the history of it. So the inside of it will tell the story of the granary in Rochester and how it started. That's what we'll work with the Historical Society on. We'll have it available for the schools to go there and things along those lines. So it actually will be community-oriented. It is going to be a clubhouse, though, that's for these 30 units. Yes, sir.
So I saw you said you were going to preserve, obviously, the signage.
Correct.
Great. So across the street at the Tree and Depot.
Yes.
There's a green historical.
Well, actually, they're painting it red now.
The, the green sign?
Oh, no, I was talking about the building.
No, no, no.
The old train station.
Yeah.
The old train station, the green sign.
Yes.
So would you talk to them? Would you be amenable to putting one up?
Yeah, we've already talked to them about that. And actually, we may take it one step farther. We're doing a couple of projects in Lake Orion right now, and it's really kind of cool. They have called Moments in Time. You go down to Lake Orion, have you seen those yet? And it's, so we're actually thinking about putting that video together. So that way, you can press that code on your phone. And if it's a school going by or whatever, they could, I could press that and have the video actually play and tell the history. So that's kind of our intent that we're gonna be working with them on as well, too. So, great little feature, by the way, just a plug for what Lake Orion did. You go down there, their Historic Society put this together, and you can actually, you know, press that RQ code when you go to the old building, and it tells like a three-minute video of the story of the building, so. So now for the residential units themselves, this is where it's going to say the granary or Rochester. We're going back and forth on which one of those. Some of them have it. But the intent is to really make this like the old train depots. So some of the buildings I used was Mill Street, the pharmacy also. I used those details. So I was very excited about incorporating, see this brickwork and what's incorporated there? That's the same features we've actually incorporated in there. So architecturally, I think the details, and you see the brickwork at top, we incorporated that as well around there. So we're really pulling this all together. This architecture is very reminiscent of the old train stations of the day as well, too. So incorporated the hip roofs and those kind of details in the project. And then this is the front elevation of what you'd see on University of the six-plex unit, which actually has the most fall from one end to the other. So there is a little bit of a walkway on there that'll have a brick wall in front as well. But this all blends really well together with the architecture of the other two buildings. And this is the 13-plex that you see off Water Street with the sidewalks coming in off the street, which is, we adjusted from the last meeting. And the same type of detail that we talked about for the details ends here, here, and then throughout the project. So I'm excited about the architecture. I think it's really gonna be unique and gonna set the tone for this area. Just a little bit of vision of the other buildings. So this is the height of the Mills, this is our project, this is the Royal Park. And then this is the other building next door, as well as the downtown area coming through there. So this is in a bit of a hole. So our height is really nothing that I think will make any type of, you know, obscure issue. I think we meet all those requirements through there. Looked at all the other compatible buildings around us and compared it, as you just saw. And then we just took this kind of a shot off Google, but you can kind of see right back here what type of impact will have, which I think from the downtown area will be very, very little. So since Vidya did such a nice job, I just thought I'd give a quick presentation of that. If anybody has any questions on that, I'm here to answer any.
Mr. Chair, can I just add one thing? So since Vidya had written her report, I went out and looked at all the trees, and worked with Nancy at Giffords. We've got, there's no landmark trees. Their replacement exceeds what we need, so we're open there.
Pretty scrubby trees.
Is that one tree still in there?
It was there, the storm pretty much wiped it out, so.
Okay, this is scheduled for a public hearing. And Jeff, I wanted to ask, the two public hearings are basically tied. Can I open them both at the same time?
I don't see why. The other one is just to enlarge the special project boundary, I don't.
So I'm gonna open the public hearing for B, for the Granary 303 East University, Special Project and Site Plan Review Approval. And then also C, Public Hearing for the Granary's Special Project Boundary Review. And I'm gonna ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and make any kind of a comment about this project. Anyone here to speak on this project? Vidya, again, I'll ask, do we have anyone waiting electronically to speak to the commission?
No one on Zoom, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. So we'll consider the public hearing opened at 7:57. And again, I'll ask if anyone here wishes to speak on it. And we'll consider it closed at 7:58. Public hearing's been held. Back to the Commissioners. You have to review Vidya's memo again, if you would, to look at the material that we have to cover in any kind of a motion you'd want to make. And again, there are two items here. One is amendment of the boundaries. And then the other is the actual site plan approval.
Mr. Commissioner, I did have one question, I'm sorry, and I hate to go backwards. Mr. Banda, can you clarify how they're gonna handle that corner on Water and University? There was, when we were here last time, we talked about some stop signs. Do you mind clarifying that?
No, thank you for asking that. That was a great suggestion, I thank the mayor, he came up with that. So we took our whole staff out there, Police Chief, Fire Chief, Randy, Jeremy, myself, a SEAL, Pooch Osterholm, AEW, went out and looked. And back in the Wayback Machine, when Main Street makeover was going on, we did have a four-way stop there.
Yeah.
But it was a wonky four-way stop, because we did nothing but put four-way, four-stop signs. So when we went out there and stood out there and looked at it, there's a few things that have to be done. Extend the curb going eastbound on University. It kind of swings in for the right turn. So they're gonna straighten that out, so there's a place to put the pole, so it's more of a formal squared-up intersection. So the way it lays out is great. We talked to Mr. Mosheri, and also we'll make every single corner handicap accessible. Right now, they're not. So we're gonna put the domes in, get the right grades.
So all of that's gonna be re-poured, re-engineered, okay.
Exactly, and they agreed to assume that cost, so.
And there'll be a sidewalk that runs on University from the corner to Royal Park, essentially, correct?
So now we have a connection all the way there, stop, handicap accessible, cross, up to go to Main Street, all four corners. So it's a much more controlled situation. We'll paint crosswalks, everything, so you'll stop there.
And developers agreed to do that, right? Okay, thank you.
Vidya, I'm assuming, as you alluded to earlier, that that should improve the level of service of that intersection? And Eric?
Yes, most definitely. Even though the applicant is not contributing too much to the traffic, we always hope that whenever a site is redeveloped, it tries to improve an existing situation, not maintain it at its present bad level. So I think Mr. Mosheri installing that four-way stop, and as Nick said, straightening out that curb and making that, those sidewalks barrier-free accessible, will definitely go a long way in improving that whole intersection and the circulation a lot.
Now, I could tell you, the chiefs and I, we spent a lot of time out there in the last couple of months, and it's amazing that people think they should stop there. It's kind of like, should I go, shouldn't I go? Now it'll be definitive. In the beginning, we'll put flags, obviously, the people will want something new. We're not worried about stacking back through Main Street, we worried about that. So we counted how many cars we have. By the time a light clears, they'll be able to clear that stop sign. So it looks, it sets itself up for success.
Christian, did that answer your question?
It does, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I have a follow-up.
Please.
So on the crosswalk over University, which will be the official one? Are there gonna be two?
Yeah, I think on both sides.
Oh, really? We're gonna have two crosswalks?
It's made, because you can stop here and go on the south side of the library, go to the north side, so.
So as you're coming up into town, you can cross on one side of water and the other side of water? Both at the same time?
It's no different than an intersection on Main Street. You can walk on all four sides of the street, four sides. I get what you're saying, it seems different there, because it's so wide. It's a longer walk than normal Main Street, but we looked at that and felt that it would be okay.
Okay.
Do you have to maybe paint in a center turn lane there to pick up some of that width?
There is one down further, but yeah.
Okay. Back to the table. And what we're looking for is further consideration and then consideration of moving this forward. Vidya, tell us exactly what we would have to do here.
So if the planning commission would please make two different motions. The first motion would be to recommend to the City Council to extend the special projects boundary line to cover a parcel in its entirety. The second motion would be to recommend site plan and special projects approval to the City Council with any conditions that you might choose to add and based upon all the review reports and the sustainability evaluation that are before you to know.
Sarah, you have a question?
Yeah, I believe in here, when I had read originally, the sustainability evaluation was 16 and a half points. This scored 14 and a half, is that correct, Vidya?
Yes, it scored 14 and a half of 20. Typically, it's required to score 15. However, I do believe the applicant deserves two additional points, which they will not get if I strictly apply the sustainability worksheet. The reason is, the sustainability evaluation worksheet grants points for the creation of new commercial businesses contributing to the economy of downtown. While the applicant is not necessarily creating a commercial business, they are generating enough number of tenants and residents in order to support the existing businesses of downtown and its economy. So the planning commission can find that the applicant deserves a couple of more points than the strict application of the sustainability evaluations collection.
Is that any different than any other residential project? It would be if the residential project. It just would seem like if that's something that should be taken into consideration, it should be for any project, and we should modify the scoring. I just want to make sure that, you know, this is below what we say is recommended. Not that that is the, you know, end-all, be-all, but I just want to make sure we're considering it as we would any other project.
We tried, just for, in front, we tried to adjust it the best you can. It's a moving target. They're gonna loop some water main, they probably could've got a point for that, it wasn't clear, but.
There has to be some consideration given, though, to the fact that you're providing.
Businesses.
30 business spaces.
Correct, that's correct.
And I know that's not in, it's not in our sustainability, but.
It should be.
It's stated it has value, and perhaps we have to amend that to include such a thing. But there are the potential for 30 private business spaces.
Well, no, I would go the other way.
But we're saying these are.
60 people or more living there, supporting downtown. So that's, there's two ways to do that. Boots on the ground is important now.
Aren't we saying this is, these are home offices, not businesses that you can walk up to? We keep kind of circling back to these are businesses.
They are not businesses. They can't be, they are.
They can't be businesses.
It's, this is residential, supporting downtown. The businesses want boots-on-the-ground people. Docatalis Place, that's 26 new apartments that people are living and supporting downtown. So there should be massive amount of points for that, because that's what we need to support our downtown.
So, if I may provide some more insight, Commissioner King. The intent of the sustainability evaluation worksheet, it is not a perfect science. It is something that the city develops so that projects are not recommended arbitrarily without certain benchmarks. So these 20 indicators were developed as a benchmark so that everybody is being treated and evaluated by the same standards. At the same time, we are cognizant of the fact that not every indicator can be applied absolutely. So the sustainability worksheet is intended as a guide to the planning commission and the City Council in making their determination. For instance, one of the conditions, one of the indicators is system capacity. Basically, an applicant has to demonstrate that they are causing no net change in the system's capacity. Right now, the site just has an old elevator building. Basically, anything you do to the site is going to exceed the system's capacity for that particular site, because they are adding new stuff into the site. So the guidelines for the points, 15 to 20, is intended as a guideline. That is not to say that we want to push a project over if it's totally not meeting the standard. In this case, there is enough interpretation for how the applicant contributes to the vitality of the downtown and its health, based upon the residential units that they are creating, that they could be worthy of a point for that particular indicator.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we also struggle with, if that, you leave it industrial, put a plant there. And what are you gonna do, the sewers? And what are you gonna do to the environment? So you don't get points for that, but it's reality. Zone industrial, that could've been a lot worse, so.
I appreciate your point.
I mean, I.
We don't want to set ourselves up for future problems.
Beautiful, I just want to make sure that we're looking at it the same that we would, you know, any other project.
And if I can add, I was on the committee who came up with that, with you, many, many years ago. And that was always the intent. It was not supposed to be super rigid, but rather a little bit fluid and used as a guideline to prevent a situation where it seemed as though the decisions that were made at this table were arbitrary. Appreciate, but rather say, okay, it fit within these contact, or these confines of this scoring, so that's how we did it.
Okay.
If I may?
Rich?
I'm wondering if we're just getting hung up on the points, because the way I look at it is if a project is eligible for a total of 20 points, 15 is 75%. Well, as Vidya said, this project is not eligible for all 20, it's only eligible for 18. You apply the same standard to 75%, that's 13 and a half points.
So it's not lower because of deficiencies, it just simply, it's not in its definition?
Yeah.
Actually.
The percentage would actually go up higher, because it scales 18, the cap, and you've got 15. So then obviously, it would exceed 75%. I don't have my calculator right now, but it would certainly be somewhere in the 80-some percentage, but yes.
Well, 13 and a half is the 75%.
Just a lawyer, we only do thirds, that's right.
That sounds like.
13 and a half would be.
It sounds like the grading system at water high school. It's easier to pass than it used to be.
Don't shake, who's got the curve?
Were there other questions or comments down here?
No, I have one. Can we go back to the intersection? So where the crossing is, right there from Riverwalk, in between Sunrise and Royal Park, could we just replicate that? It's very formal. People come upon it and understand, hey, I may need to stop here. I don't want it just to be pavement. Could we have those two? Yes, the bricscape on both those lanes to reinforce the four-way.
Answer's yes, it just comes down to money. I mean, that's expensive. That was $40,000 alone.
Can we ask the applicant to provide us that?
I'd be happy to, there's some of the costs with the city.
Okay.
Considering the amount of money we're putting into that iconic portion of the barn, I think some credits due there.
No question.
So I think Mr. Banda, we can talk offline about some sort of agreements on that.
It's a stamped concrete, it's not actual brick, so.
Right, you could even make it a complete square, because it's not Main Street, right? You can. But I would be very happy with just the two formal lanes going across University to help people understand this is an intersection you need.
Catch their eye.
Yes.
Well, if I could add to that, I would maybe just take a look at, that is a long stretch across University there.
Right.
And maybe, I know that that pedestrian walkway has, I think, the stop sign in the middle of it. Kind of, kind of breaks it up a little bit. Maybe look at options. Something to break that length up a little bit. Something to break that length up a little bit.
Yeah, it, it doesn't mean it all has to be on the developer. I mean, we have dollars in our locals, too. And, and actually, we're putting up the, the advanced warning signs now at all the sections, so down by the Royal Park, they're gonna have the flashy signs. So you wouldn't want to do that here, but we could certainly look into other options. It's, that's a fair ask, and we could talk-
So you two can work this out?
Yep.
Eighty-twenty, the city to Mosher, right?
All right, David?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on, motion one is stated by Vidya for an expansion of special projects zone to include the full partial. Approve that. I'm stating to approve that.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Is there another motion?
Why don't you do that one first, then?
We're gonna vote him.
Okay, any?
You said we could do both at the same time.
Okay.
What's that?
It's a public hearing. Public hearing. For, for the record, it should probably be two separate motions.
Okay. By the way, the public hearing was held, and we'll consider it closed at eight oh five. I forgot to do that officially. How about another motion?
Can you refresh our recollection as to what that language needs to be?
Vidya?
Do we need to vote?
Can we vote on the first one?
Mr. McGee, I would suggest you make one motion, finish working on it, and then make the second motion, so it's for you.
So we have a motion, and, uh, motion's supported, and let's have the roll call.
McGee?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Vixen?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Gassen?
Yes.
Kenjuk?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, does someone want to try another motion? Vidya, what does the other motion have to say?
So your second motion would be to recommend site plan and special project approval for the granary to the city council, subject to any conditions you might wish to add. If there are no conditions, it would be subject to the Meckena Report of July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, the sustainability evaluation, and any additional reports done by DPW Engineering and Fire.
And what do we want to add to that list? Do we want to add the, uh-
Signs.
Conditions for the, uh-
To the development agreement?
To the vel, the development agreement, the signage issue.
Signage, and then I think the lease issue, that they would have to, that would be subject to the special use-
Conditions.
Conditions, correct? Yes. Trying to think of this.
Subject to the city attorney's approval, by the way. And then we want to add the crossing walk, uh, issue?
You could put it to work with the city to share in the cost of the crosswalk.
Okay, of a crosswalk system.
I don't know if this is part of the development agreement, but I know the brownstones on Main, we had required the bonding for the cost of that, or for the, you know, potential tear-down for that project, and that was something that we were doing for others. Is that already been considered?
Nick, did you discuss this with the developer?
No, there's, they, there's nothing left there, so to bring it back to the standards, I guess.
But it would've been to remove a partially constructed, uh-
And obviously, we've had-
Brownstone.
Well.
That's become an issue.
That's a subject for the end of the meeting, yeah.
I, I just-
Yeah.
I don't know how we can pick and choose. I, that was something we started doing, so they're-
So it could be required by to restore to grading and seating a lot. That, that's fine. I mean, that's, that's what we did the other ones. If, the, the building was halfway up, they'd have to, they're down to get to grading.
Right.
Does it make sense to add, to just bring that to the attention of the developer, just to make sure that they understand exactly what we're talking about?
And why we're doing it.
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, in case somebody started a building, tore everything up, and walked away, we would at least go back to flat ground and seed it. So we put up a, a line of credit or a bond for that, which would be minimal, obviously, because it's, it's their problem.
Yeah, and I think-
That's, that's-
We don't think that's gonna happen, but it's happening.
When it happens, we need to.
And we'd be consistent. Done that in the last two.
Okay, good catch.
We're gonna add that?
Yep.
Okay.
I would make a motion consistent with what Vidya said. Unfortunately, I can't recite everything that she said, but the record should reflect that. I would support the motion based on what was-
In addition to the bonding, the crosswalk?
The crosswalk, signage.